I'm Tivoli Mayor Joel Griffiths. I'm just here with the Tivoli ZBA to assist with the virtual meeting. Under the governor's, under the governor.
Uh oh.
Rose.
You're good now, Joel. Looks like.
Okay. So that was myself flipping around on the YouTube stream. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed and it's a hearing the public can chat in the YouTube livestream. They can also call in to the phone by Laura Gail Tyler, 757-2021. So with that, I'll bow out and let you all have a meeting. And again, I'll be listening if you have any technical issues, just speak up. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Joel. Okay, let's say everybody's in attendance. So we'll start the meeting at 7:03. Everybody can hear me? Okay? Right. So I think we'll, as we have done, we will put our minute approving at the end of the meeting and we'll just get into our continuation of AD Montgomery Street. Application. So we do have, we have an open public hearing on that. So I guess we'll just reopen that or reengage that already open hearing now, which I will do with a vote. Anybody move to reopen the hearing?
Reopen the hearing.
Ethan, Ethan moves. Anybody seconds?
I'll do it. Yeah. I second.
Okay, Mark seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So open hearing. Alright, so some, some news that we're all kind of digesting. We just got some documents back today. So this larger question, backing up a little bit. There was a question as to the status of, of the lot and if there was technically a building on the lot. And this was the question that we put to the attorneys along with a question about the relevance of the 2005 variance. And what we have found out is that the lot is considered vacant. So for all intents and purposes, any variance application would have to not assume a renovation, not assume that there's any building on the lot currently. Sorry? Is that Mark? Or is that, was that you?
Yeah, no, I, I was surprised by that. I didn't fully understand that. But I get it.
Okay. And that, also in that note, I mean, that doesn't change the fact that the, obviously the building was, was there in a non-conforming fashion previously. So I think those are the, kind of the key points. I don't know if there's, did anybody else had to read anything from that memo that they wanted to bring up or had questions about anything in there?
No, memo was pretty clear.
Okay, great. So as a result of that, the memo was given to the building inspector or acting, sorry, acting building inspector zoning enforcement officer who issued a new denial letter. And I'm sorry, Laura Gough, I didn't, did Alex get a copy of that?
No, no, I couldn't email it to you, Alex.
I have no copies of any of this information that you're telling me.
Okay, yeah. So, so there's a revised denial letter basically explaining that those previously non-conforming parts are now also in need of a variance. And the, the good news at this point is that one, we can continue this hearing without re-noticing because the language of the notice was broad enough to to accommodate a revision of the application. And we could amend the application kind of on the fly. Of course, Alex, it's your application. So we need your input on that. And it basically would mean that the, the other parts of the proposed building that are in that north setback would need to be included in the, in the variance. And if it's useful, I could share my screen. We can just look at the plan. I don't know if, I mean, people may have kind of lost track of, of a reference. Would that be, would that be helpful?
I've got drawings, so.
Okay. Alright.
I don't know if it's time for me to give my opinion or not.
Well, I guess, why don't we start with Alex? Alex, do you want to proceed with an amendment of the application?
Well, I don't know that I have any choice in the matter. So I'm still listening. And the foundation is there. It sticks out of the ground. So I don't know whether the memo you sent out says that that foundation does not exist. But as far as I'm concerned, that's part of a building. And there was no application ever filed to remove the building. There was an application filed to remove the wood framing above the foundation. That's the first point. Number two, the, the Duchess County Department of Finance amended the status of the lot in their categories, but I don't think the Village of Tivoli ever announced that this building no longer exists and this is a vacant lot. So I mean, there's a difference of terminology there, which is important. But you know, that's becomes a sort of a semantic discussion of fine points. If you want to amend the zoning application, I can certainly sign up for that. And you know, this is going on long enough already.
Yeah, I mean, our, our objective is really to make sure that everything is, is clear as possible in the application, in our determination. And unfortunately, in this case, the initial denial wasn't fully clear. And you know, we've done our best to clarify that as quickly as possible. It's taken some time, obviously, but I think we're at a point now where we do have some clarity. So if, let's see, I'm trying to think of the best way to proceed to revise.
Jonathan, would it be?
In front of me.
Would, would it be helpful to just, just quickly summarize the, the letters that we, we got since it seems like not everyone had a chance to like fully, fully read it?
Yeah, I can. Well, we, we went through the memo. I can, I'll go through the, the the denial letter now. So this was issued. Let's see, where's the date? I don't see a date on here, but I think it was the 27th. So the denial letter reads, "A new application for zoning variance is required. Reasons stated below. One, existing approvals were based on a building that no longer exists. Two, a new building is proposed. New approvals are needed. Three, proposed building changes. The footprint of the existing building, west extension." And then there's an excerpt from the there's an excerpt from the Village Code, which is just relative to the side yard setback. There shall be two side yards with a total width of less than 30 feet. The width of the narrow of the two side yards shall not be less than a third of the total of the two side yards. And the numbers stay the same. The total side yard setback, the variance would be from 30 feet to 21 foot six. So the variance requested there would be eight foot six. And then the minimum side yard setback of 10 feet would, the proposed minimum would be six foot four.
Is that, is that based on the original building or this incorporates both set, both variances from the original bill? I mean, before it was built?
That incorporates the, the, the previously non-conforming condition to the, to the north where the building was within the setback, but then also the addition of, of the, the porch on the, on the south side. So it's basically this, the same distance into the setbacks as the initial application that Alex made. The only difference is that the, the portion of the building on the north side, which stretches west, which was assumed to be not needing a variance, does in fact need a variance.
I'd like to point something out here.
Yeah.
Or at least talk about my considerate thoughts. Okay, so all of these lots are non-conforming originally, even before any of these variances are. So that foundation is non-conforming. Right? And by the lawyer's statement, now, now it's basically not an existing foundation. I think we should assume that we, we should accept that as at least a house that's there. Otherwise, you know, that lot's useless. You know, as far as the other variances, I'm not sure how to deal with that, but did that make sense?
Yeah.
Why, why is it useless? I don't understand where, where you mean it's useless.
You can't build a house in that lot.
Because is it?
It's not conforming completely.
Is it less than 15,000 square feet?
So I don't think that's true, Mark. You, you, the only issue here is that the proposed building is extending into the side yard setback. You still have quite a bit of area within those setbacks. Or I'm sorry, between those setbacks to build a house.
Oh, okay. It's, okay. All right. I may be wrong. I apologize.
No problem. I mean, I think that there is, you know, the historical building location is significant here. And if the, if the proposal was to build the, the exact same footprint, to me, that's, that's a very strong argument that, because the building was there historically, zoning was applied later and basically made, made that non-conformant, non-conforming situation. The difference here, which I'm also sympathetic to, is that, is that the, the proposed building extends, adds on to the new, I'm sorry, the existing footprint, the previously existing footprint. So I think, you know, that's, that's one component of this that we need to flesh out. You know, another part of the memo was that the 2005 variance that was granted really only is relevant if, if it's attached to the, the previous building. You know, I mean, that's also
relevant as well.
Yeah. What's concerning me is this comment under section 231 dash 51B of the zoning law that says that no building shall be reconstructed or added to extend further into any already deficient yard space or reduce any already deficient area. That's pretty much exactly talking about what this application is about.
I didn't hear any of that.
Yeah. Bob, could you just read that again, please?
Yeah, it says.
Which, which, which section was it?
It's, I think that's on the second page, on his analysis. He says on the section 231 dash 51B.
Who's analysis?
Hit the lawyer's analysis. The attorney's analysis in the memo. Can you hear me?
Yeah. Any building, I see.
Yeah, Bob, if I could just, if I could just jump in, I think that that is that is, what he's doing there is ruling out, he's in agreement with you. He's ruling out that that part of the code, which would allow, you know, if your house is destroyed by fire, flood, or whatever, that you can rebuild it, even if it's non-conforming. But they're saying that that doesn't apply here. So I don't think that's in, that's you know, something that we're, we're debating whether that, that applies or not. I think we're in agreement that it doesn't.
Okay.
I think
the opposite direction.
Because what they're doing is they're, they're examining, you know, kind of the, the context, what could possibly apply here? And they're kind of knocking them off one by one, saying this doesn't apply, that doesn't apply.
So are you saying, he's saying that this doesn't apply?
Yes, it doesn't.
I'm not seeing that. Where does he say that?
In the, in the, there's some interpretation in the, in the paragraphs below. The last, the last part of that section, "The structure cannot be rebuilt to its former footprint without the need for area variances." That would, so that, that puts us where we are now.
Okay. All he's saying is it requires variances, which we knew to begin with.
Yeah, but the variances are more, are more extensive than in the initial application. Karen, did you have another comment?
I, I just, does, does he need to come up with a new variance application or do we stay with what we have and have it amended?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think well, kind of what we want to do is amend it now, amend it on the fly so that it, it encapsulates the other parts of the building that are now deemed to be non-conforming. Is that, is that clear? Or is there stuff that we should discuss? Yeah, Laura Gough.
From a clerical standpoint, I might suggest that you look at the application itself.
Yeah.
If you have that through, I didn't resend the whole application to you. I can, Karen just held up hers. The zoning, I, I'll point out a couple of things about it. The zoning, that what requires the variance that was filled out still is perfectly applicable. At the end, it's still the same zoning. He's, the, the amendment, the, the note E about the side yards, which the building inspector quoted is still the same thing. So I think the only two tiny changes to the application are in the description of it on the front middle part of the application. And then the map that went along with the application that shows it broken down into three different sections, so that it's just unifying those three sections into one, one thing. I think those are the only things that change with the amendment. But that's, you know, depending on how any or all of you want to end up amending it.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the, the documents, the drawings obviously need to be changed and the, and those could even be probably edited down to one or two drawings that kind of show, you know, what we're talking about, just for, just for the sake of brevity. And then up on the first sheet, Laura Gough, you said the middle, you talked, you're talking about reason for appeal, which says front porch added to this proposed design to fit Tivoli's aesthetic and to comply with Tivoli pattern book extends into required side setback. And then two side entrance porch, so that, that could stay side entrance porch extends into required total of side yards.
So I'm having some problems with this. So it, we have two problems going on here, is the initial footprint of the building. Okay, are we accepting that or not?
There is, there's no, currently no building on the site. It's a, it's a vacant lot.
Right.
Yet there was a, a building there previously, and we know where that footprint was.
So, so are we ignoring that or are we taking this completely from scratch?
Well, kind of both. I mean, we're, it's, it's a vacant lot. We're taking it from scratch, but at the same time, we, we should consider that, that, that historical building existed. We know its footprint. The, the, the proposed building does not extend any further into that side yard setback than the building that was there previously.
Right.
And, and if, you know, as we go through our criteria, you know, for instance, if we hit on whether or not the, the granting the variance would would be a problem for the, for the character of the neighborhood. That building was, was a part of the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah. Well, the problem I'm having is, is actually how we can make a decision, given the powers that we have. I think we could just, what I'm sort of inclining towards is to accept that the original building and just say, that's that. And then we could just talk about the variances after that. I mean, just to make it more simple for us, you know? I don't know if that's legal, but that seems simpler.
I'm not sure. I totally understand.
What I'm saying is, is just accept the original building and don't think of it as any kind of, well, and maybe I'm not fully understanding everything. I'm trying to figure out how we can cut this into little pieces so that we can make a decision on it, you know? And I'm trying to figure out yeah, what we can rule on, you know?
Well, I mean, at its, at its core, what we're ruling on is, is a, a variance to, for a, a side yard setback.
All right. So, but the original building is in dispute. So, oh, okay, okay.
It's not really in dispute. It's not in dispute. There's a historical building that was on the site. Now there is no building.
So, so it's, it's new construction.
Right. So you, if you put a legal building on the site, then you can have, we can do variances from that.
No, we're putting a new building on the site, which needs a variance on the northern side. Side yard.
No, what I'm what I'm talking about is I'm trying to start with someplace where he's got a building that is completely not within our purview, you know, it's just a legal building. And then we can start from there.
But there is no building. So we have to start from ground zero, don't we? There is no building, the vacant lot.
Let's try, let's try to rewind back to our, our first meeting. And let's assume that the denial letter took care of all of these issues. And what we, what we would be looking at is an application for new construction, variance on a, a new construction project that is going to proposed footprint goes into side yard setback limit.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Now, in addition to all that, there is the fact that there was a building fairly recently on that site. And on the north side, and also on the south side, I believe, the proposed building is aligned with the limits of that and does not extend any further into the side yard than that, that building did, although it does extend further west.
Are you sure? Because when I look at this map, are you sure that that was the original footprint? Or that the west side or the north side of that hasn't extended into the lot beyond the original footprint? Because the house looks wider on this map than, than it probably did when it existed. I don't know. I, I mean, I can't go on a is this a new construction or are we still looking at the same footprint of the old building? I don't think so.
Well, I'm looking at the, the plan that Alex submitted after the stakes were in place. And that, that clearly shows an existing concrete foundation in, in red.
Yeah.
And, and then the two staked off areas of the porches at that point do not extend any further north or south than that, that red existing foundation.
Do you need some clarifications?
Sorry?
Do you need some clarifications from me?
Yeah.
Yeah, here, let me, let me share this.
I think so.
Sure.
I like to hear it.
Let me share my screen and I'll put that, I'll put that one up there. So we're all looking at the same thing. Let's see. Okay, does everybody see this?
Yeah.
All right. So here's, here's the extent of the, the, the variance on the north. Here's the extent on the south. And, and here is this existing foundation. Is that, is that correct, Alex?
Right. That's correct.
Okay.
So the, the piece between the existing concrete foundation and the porch, that was the site of the original house. In 2004, 2005, we applied for variance to extend that house further west. And the extension, actually, there was an extension there in, in, I don't remember what, what it was, but that extension was torn down. We put in the foundation because the extension was a one-story extension. And we made it a two-story extension. And the fact that it has become a two-story extension and extended a little further, the extra 10 foot six beyond the foundation, there's a stake number 11. And there was actually a sonnet tube at that location that was going to carry a, a one-story further extension. That's gone and we're not actually going to do that. There's only going to be a deck in that area. So the, what you refer to as the original house, I assume is the 1900 house that's over 100 years old. That's the portion that's between the red and the yellow on the plan. And the portion red is the 2005 foundation, which was built and it exists. It's above the ground. And I don't understand what, how a memo could be written that it doesn't exist. And I don't understand what, how a memo could be written that it doesn't exist. But the fact it doesn't have habitable area does not mean that that foundation does not exist. And where, uh, you know, so far in my practice, uh, there is a concept called vesting. Where if something is built to a certain extent, uh, it, it cannot be denied that it exists. Yes, your, your green portion now. Is the original house.
Okay.
And it had an extension going west over the red area. Not the full 23 foot with north, south. It was a smaller piece as far as I remember. It's, I have a very vague memory of that. But, uh, there was, there was construction in that area and it did line up along the north side. Uh, and I've got some photographs of it, I'm sure. So there, there was actually, um. Construction along that whole blue line going not all the way to 10 foot six, but it certainly covered the red area.
I can, did anybody else lose Alex there? I can't hear anybody.
No, I've, I've, I've said everything I had to say at this point. On this question, I thought you wanted me to indicate which was the old, which was the new.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I still think we should just accept that foundation. You know?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I can hear.
Joel.
Jonathan, you might be frozen, actually.
Yeah, this is Joel. So did we lose Jonathan?
Yes.
Seems like he's frozen.
There, there. Where is he?
All right, he'll probably. He'll probably try and come back in. Just give him a second.
He's coming.
There he is.
Jonathan, do you want to try audio only?
This the meeting where we can talk about upgrading the internet definitely too?
I vote for that. Are you in Tively, Ethan?
Oh yeah, we're, we're heading back today.
Okay.
So is Jonathan trying to get back in?
Looks like Jonathan is still struggling here.
Are we all frozen up?
I'm not.
I'm not.
I think we're just waiting for Jonathan to pop back in.
Yeah, okay. No, I was just, I, I went off and took a break. So, you know? Are you in Japan?
Yep, still here. We're actually, we're leaving today. We'll be back in about 24 hours.
Really?
Legitimately. Hi, so you're, you're frozen, but do you, um? Okay, so Jonathan just called. He's gonna try calling in.
Okay.
I think I, I hear you, Jonathan. All right, dude.
While we wait, if I may, um, one of you, Jonathan's going to try to get back in, but one of you could also act as the acting chair if. So the meeting doesn't completely fall apart.
Okay.
I'm not prepared.
You can play rock, paper, scissors.
Yeah, I'm not prepared for this to be the, the chair right now. I love, I.
Yeah, you're the one.
Easier said.
I'm crossing my fingers that Jonathan will be successful.
Yes. Well, and perhaps maybe we could just. Just, well, I guess we need, we, we need, do we need Jonathan back in to, to keep going?
No, I think we had a quorum went out.
Okay.
Well, the question is, what are we doing here? I mean, like.
Well, that's what, that's what I wanted to say was just like, perhaps we can just simplify this. Obviously we have, you know, it's a, it's a nuanced situation. We have this analysis from the lawyers. And I think just going back to what Jonathan actually laid out at the beginning of the meeting, like, I think there is, you know, there is a clear question before us. You know, and what, and what we need to, to rule on, we, we need to take into account. All these other factors and, and sort of the history of the place, but it doesn't, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't seem like. We need to get into all the nitty gritty of this, of this, um. Of the, the status of this property.
Yeah, I totally agree with you. I think we should do, close, close the public meeting. And, uh, go into our, the variance balancing test. See if, uh. Because the only, the only question I have in the five areas of balancing is.
Is Jonathan here? Can you guys hear me?
Oh, okay. Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. I'm not sure what's, what's going on here.
Okay, it's, it's your phone thing.
Yes. So Jonathan, we're just, we're just trying to move this along and, you know, kind of accept the nuances of the history of this place and.
Yeah.
Move towards some resolution on the things that we need to, uh, vote on.
I, it seems like it's pretty cut and dry at this point with the lawyer's ruling that we, the two variances that. Mr. Niederhoff needs to do his new construction. And that's the, the total side yard and the narrow restriction on the side yard. I think those, that's basically what this is boiled down to, isn't it? Just those two variances? But they're a little bit larger than the ones we originally had.
Yeah.
At least the one on the north side.
Yeah, it's basically, I mean, they've, they've cleared, clarified for us what the application should be and it's up to us to. To assess that. Now and, and, uh, and reach a resolution. Yeah. So what, what did I miss? I mean, were people, should we go through criteria or do people have?
Then we have to close the public meeting?
Uh, yes, good point. Um, I, I mean, I'm assuming Laura.
Can I, can I say something real quick, Jonathan?
Sure.
If you're going to amend the application, the language or anything, you want to do that before you close the public hearing. Right. Because that's new information or amending it. And then. If you, if you're not going, you know, do whatever you're going to do before you close the public hearing.
And take a vote.
Yeah, so it's. It makes sense. Yeah, okay. It's a little, it's a little bit, um, yeah, let's look at the application. So. I mean, and of course we've got to do this with. Alex on board. It's his application ultimately. But if we go through, I don't know if everybody has it in front of you, if you do. So, um. Everything is good until we get to reason for appeal. Uh, number one, the front porch added to this proposed design to fit Tively's aesthetic and to comply with the Tively pattern. Book extends into required side setback. So this, this, uh, describes what's happening on the north side of the building. In the previous application. So, um. So I think this, we need to amend this to not be, uh, just the front porch. But the entire, uh, north side of the building.
The total side yard.
The total north, north side of the building extends into the side yard. So, um, so it could just say the north side of the building in the proposed design, uh. Sorry, added to this, wait, the, the north side of the building. Of the proposed design to fit Tively's aesthetic and to comply with the Tively pattern book extends into the required side setback. Does that sound accurate and, uh?
Should you specify feet?
Uh, I think that's, I mean, that's specified in the denial letter.
Okay.
And. And it's specified on the drawings too. I mean, I guess this is the other, well, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to be amending drawings here. So I guess we can, uh, stipulate. That, you know, all of this is, is dependent on the drawings reflecting. What this language, you know, what we're talking about and, and the, and the numbers in the denial letter and in any resolution.
All right. So the north setback. I, I'm having some problems with this. Um. So the existing building is legit. And we're doing a variance on, well, among other things, we're doing a variance on the north setback. And there was another variance that's granted that's in dispute. And.
It's not, it's not really in dispute. Um. I mean, where we are now. Is that we have a proposed, we have a proposal, a proposed plan. That extends into the side yard setback along this whole north edge. I mean, those are kind of the facts on the ground.
So, so. Okay, so. Okay. I'm okay with this. All right. I understand it.
All right. So, um, so those two pieces and then number two in the reason for appeal, side entrance porch extends into required total of side yards. Minimum.
On the south.
Total 30 feet. Yes. That one remains, um. In effect.
Right.
Okay. So Laura, are you making these, you revising this as we go?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Um, I might simplify it more and just say the width of the proposed house leaves the total side yard setbacks. Less than the minimum, the minimum. Because i- if you take off that side, um, porch is, are you at 30 feet? I guess what I'm saying is you can't attribute it just to the side porch. It's just cut and dry the width of the house.
Yeah, there would just be, there would just be one, there would just be one, um, not do it in two parts, you're saying.
No, the, um. I mean, you can, you can say the width of the house makes it so that the total side yards is less than 30 feet.
That's it.
And I can write down that language if you want me to.
Yes.
Yeah. So it'd just be one, instead of having two, two parts here.
It's still two parts because you still have the north side and the.
And the south side.
No, you still have the north side too close to the, the north property line.
Right.
Still have two variances, so it's still two parts.
Right.
Well.
Okay, let's, yes, let's do part one. The overall width of the building extends into the side yard setbacks point two. On the north side, the remaining side yard setback is, uh, is too narrow.
Okay.
Okay, um, moving on to the other entries here. So, um. Number one, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties because. And the answer was the required variance follows Tively pattern, follows Tively pattern book requirement. In the historic overlay district, front porches have to align with entire width of structure. Side porch. Reprises pattern of original house and results from unusually narrow lot. So this one, again, there's, there's, there's emphasis on the, the porch alignment.
It's keeping, keeping in character with the neighborhood.
I think so. I think it's a little fancier than average, but yeah.
I mean, this is a little strange because we're, we're kind of writing resolutions and editing the, uh. The application at the same time, the application, of course, which is generally written by the applicant. So, you know, I don't know how much we want to rewrite here. I mean, a, a lot of this isn't, um. Certainly isn't the whole story because there's, again, emphasis on the porches mostly. But I'm a, I don't, you know, I don't want to put words in Alex's mouth for the sake of the application. Process wise, I'm not sure what. What that means. Um.
Jonathan, the, the size of the house is in keeping with the neighboring homes that are on that street. It's not, I mean, it fits in the character, the size of the house, porch. I'm sure the, hopefully the construction of it. And I, I mean, there are houses on the street that don't have porches as well. But I think that. It's, it's a variety of homes on that street, quite a few varieties home of homes. But I think it's probably keeping more with the, um, the original construction of the house.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I think, um. Yeah, I, I, I agree with that. I, I think um I'm just po- pointing out, process wise, we're rewriting the application, if that's, if that's our objective here. Um, but, but you know, it seems like we're kind of veering off into writing our resolution.
Jonathan, can I weigh in again, even though I'm not supposed to?
Uh, please.
Um, usually what applicants write in those five things um, doesn't, isn't very informed about the five part criteria that the ZBA goes through, so the, the reason that they answer those questions is to help the ZBA answer the five part criteria test. So I think you can not amend those parts if you wish and just amend what the project is and just, just to keep it simple, if, if you want a suggestion.
Yeah, I would prefer to do that because I mean, I just don't feel comfortable writing that, you know, writing the application. I don't think it's, that's not our, our role here. So if it doesn't fundamentally, I mean, if everybody agrees, it doesn't fundamentally affect the application. I mean, we should go through and just see if there are details in here that do need to be changed. So for instance, number one, I don't, I don't see any details in there that really are fundamentally changed. I would say we, we can leave that.
Uh, the thing that's uh bugging me is that this whole issue of the original house, so I guess we're accepting that. And now we're just doing the variances on the original house. So, I mean, it, it just seemed like there was all this extra stuff.
Um, okay, I'm, I'm not, I don't know that I'm totally understanding.
So all we're doing is
What you're saying.
What I'm trying to do is just accept the original um building plan and just, just rule on the variances.
Uh, when you say the original building plan, you, you mean?
Well, there is seem to have been this whole thing about this house doesn't exist anymore, so.
Yeah. It doesn't.
Yeah, so it's a little weird.
Well, I mean, there's, there's no building on the lot. There's a proposal um for a new building on the lot. And the new ba- building on the lot, new building on the lot uh conforms on that north side to the, the uh, the incursion into the side yard setback of the historical building that was on the lot.
Okay, so all I'm doing is ruling on the variances, uh, on, as if that building did exist.
No.
It did, well, it did, it did exist, but we're not, we're not, this is not a renovation. This is a, this is a new building. So just think of it as, as a, just think of it as a vacant lot, that there's a proposal for a new building.
Right.
But in this case, there just, there just happens to have been a historical building and the new construction is aligning with that.
And, and the historical building does not need a variance.
Well, it's the, the, I mean, what do you mean by that? What do you mean by that?
Well, that's the question I have, is the historical building is legit. So, I mean, I'm just, I mean, you know, many buildings we rule on are are non-conforming already. And uh you know, and then we just add another variance on top of that, but.
Well.
That, that's what I'm trying to figure out. I, I just don't know what we're trying to do here, you know?
Yeah, the, the historical building was non-conforming.
Right.
But it, but it was, but it was there. So it was there, you know, it wasn't impacted by zoning, which came later.
And so that was my question is, is do I just assume that I'm ruling as if that building was there?
No.
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 No, that, that building, that building is, that building has gone away. There's a new proposal for new construction on a vacant lot.
So it's a bigger variance than we're talking about.
Exactly.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Yeah, instead of a variance for just the two porches, now it's a variance for the south porch and then the, the, all the construction along the north edge that extends past the setback.
Okay, I'm so, yeah, I'm sorry if I'm not keeping up, but uh, okay, that was my question.
Okay, great.
We're there.
Um, so now uh, we're s- still just going through this application. Uh, let's just make sure the rest of these items, there's anything we need to change. So number two, what, the, the answer was omission of front porch, cutting off its front north corner or pushing back the entire house would violate pattern book. Porches inconsistent setbacks. All doors typically have porch or porticoes covering them as shown in pattern book. Okay, again, I don't think there's any, any details in there that would need to be changed.
Jonathan, the only thing I would say is that no matter where you position the size of this house on that lot, it's going to need a variance. On the side yards. For the size of the building and the lot, it will require a variance. So no matter where you position it, you're gonna need it. Because I think it's twenty-three feet wide by thirty-two. Which twenty-three feet is not, you know, excessively wide.
Yeah, um, can we save that for the, for the resolutions?
Sure.
Okay.
And then uh, number three, uh, the question is, is the variance requested substantial? Um, the answer was no. Front porch projects three foot eight into north setback and aligns with encroachment approved in two thousand and five. Side porch projects. I don't know if that's right. Side porch projects, let's say forty-one feet, feet, four feet six into south setback and aligns with historic projection and existing foundation. So again, not the whole story, but um I think the only thing that I would strike from this uh, is the, and aligns with encroachment approved in two thousand and five. Just because that's no longer relevant.
That's the old, uh, yeah.
That's the, the old variance.
Yeah.
Okay, um, a- any, anything else on that one? No, okay.
Yeah.
Uh, will the proposed area variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or zoning district?
I don't think so.
Uh, okay, the answer uh that Alex gave, projections follow Tively pattern book as to configuration and historical projections of the original nineteen-hundred house. So I think that's totally appropriate for current application. Uh, everybody in agreement with that one?
I do.
Yep.
Okay, uh, was the difficulty that you have with the area requirements of law created by something you did? Uh, this one, there are no real details of the project in there, so that one's good.
I think they're stuck with a bad lot, so.
And then the remaining, yeah, so then that just leaves the drawings which we would need amended to, to show um the enlargement of, of, of the uh, the variance request. So um that would be something that Alex will have to provide to us, and I think we should include something in the resolution about, about that being provided. All right, so is that, I mean, people comfortable with those edits? Um, or lack of editing on the, on the application?
Okay. Yes.
Okay, I, yeah, so I can't see everybody nodding or.
Oh, yeah, I'm okay.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
All right. Great, thanks. Okay, so that just leaves um, any, any other comments or questions, clarifications before we try to dig into um, our criteria and developing some resolutions, which we've just had a, a bit of a dress rehearsal for. Any other uh, comments or, or questions on the application generally, or, or some of these twists and turns?
No.
No.
No, yeah, not for, not for me.
Okay, great. Okay, um, so let's close the public hearing, first of all. Did we not do that? I don't think we did. Um, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Okay, thanks Karen, second?
I'll second it. Mark.
Mark, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, all opposed? Okay, uh, passes unanimously, so hearing is closed. Okay, so this is tricky, um. We have some drafted resolution pieces here. Um, unfortunately, I can't share share my screen with them, um. I s- I think it's good to look at them. Um, Laura Gail, would it be possible for you to share your screen?
Uh, what do you want me to share? I, I can, the, what do you, the, the one that you sent um, in the last email?
Yeah, I mean, that one was, um. Let's see. Yeah, let, let's, let's start with that one. I mean, that, that one was, was drafted for the initial application. But we might be able to edit it um to get in shape.
It's opening.
Okay.
Um. Hold on. Give me a second. Um, okay, going back, I, I think, I think this is what you sent me. Okay, do you have that?
Yeah.
Yeah, looking at it.
Jonathan, you can't see it. It's got.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to log on again.
It's got.
See if anything's changed.
Did you um? Is this just? Sorry. Does it have the red comments in it?
Uh, I see one red comment.
No, I mean, I'm asking John if I have the right version.
Yeah, I think that's right, uh, after John Fenton.
Yeah.
There's one red comment, yeah.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure I had the right one for you, that's it.
Yeah.
Um, so
That's right.
I've got it open. I'm still not, it's still like, uh, I don't think I'm coming through.
Okay.
Through Zoom, but I can at least see it.
Yep.
Um, so I've got it open. I'm, I'm still not, it's still like, uh I don't think I'm, I'm coming through through Zoom, but I I can at least see. All right, it just crashed again. Can you guys hear me on the phone still?
Yeah, if you have a copy of that, Jonathan, it'd be okay because we all can see it on the, on the screen.
Yeah, okay, I'm just gonna, yeah, I'm just gonna go ahead with that. So why, as, as a way of editing that as needed, why don't we go through our, our criteria? Um, those are embedded in there. Along with some other stuff, I think. So, um. So first of all, uh, is an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood caused by by uh, by the, the proposed project?
I don't believe there is. That's Mark.
And, and why not, Mark?
Uh, just, um, it is a, a wreck that's been there forever and they're doing a nice job on the house and uh I, they could be good to have a, a good quality house there. You know, regardless of all the other issues, but uh.
Well, I think the resolution states it pretty well. The design conforms to the guidelines uh, in the district.
Okay, um, any other comments?
Just tell me and I will type stuff in here.
Yeah, I think some, maybe to um, to reflect Mark's comment. So we're, we're looking at the paragraph that begins, whereas the design of the building conforms to the guidelines in the Tively pattern book. Maybe, uh, I'm, I'm just trying to come up with something to reflect Mark's comment, so, and the proposed building would greatly improve on the existing conditions?
Oh. Oh, we're doing boilerplate, okay. Ye- yes, the, the new building would improve on the existing conditions and it conforms to the Tively pattern book. And.
Yeah, we've got, yeah, we've got that already, and then it would continue, and the building adheres to all their bulk regulations for principal buildings in the HO district. The variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood.
Perfect.
I agree.
Good, okay. All right, uh, our next criteria involves um alternatives, and let's see, what we had here, what I had here previously, whereas there is not a more desirable alternative because the existing non-compliant footprint of the building has been established by prior construction and by prior approved area variance. Okay, so this one needs to be changed. Uh, I think I would put it, whereas there is not a more desirable alternative because existing non-compliant. There's no, okay, there is no existing non-compliant. Um, Karen, you had some language that you wanted, I think, to include.
My thing, what is, uh, what I was stating is that the building footprint, no matter where it is stated on that property, would need a variance wherever it was located because of the uh narrowness of the lot in order to rebuild the house.
Yeah, so maybe something to the effect of uh.
Um, where. The building was. Uh, based historically on the original footprint and is the most effective building for the lot.
Yeah, okay.
A supplement.
Yeah, whereas, well, okay. I mean. Assessing whether there's an alternative or not. Maybe doesn't really, um. Well, I guess the historical footprint could, could color that, I mean, I think. Karen's point is important, that, um. That the size of the house, which is not unreasonable, um.
It's within the pattern book, yeah.
Well, it's within what was, once was constructed there on the lot.
Yeah, wouldn't it on, wouldn't fit on the lot? And, uh, furthermore, that it, that it, uh. That it, it, that it doesn't extend beyond the, uh, historical. Um, doesn't, it, it doesn't extend further into the historical, um, limits of the side yard. Okay. That's not very concise. Let's see, let's try to clean this one up.
This isn't our, yeah.
Um. Let me see, I'm just gonna look at. The other template that we have, where is that? Uh, the language could actually be very simple here, let's see. I'm just opening up another one. That Laura Gale had sent. Okay, let's, if we just start off, whereas there's, there is not a more desirable al- alternative, because. Then I think we can go into, uh. The width of the lot.
Is restricted, or?
Yeah, is, yeah, is, um. Is such that the. Proposed building. Would require the variances, no matter where it was placed.
Doesn't sound that legalese. The lot is constrained, uh, by, uh. Laura Gale's really good at this, you know?
Laura Gale wrote something.
Yeah, you, you did, but it. That's what I just started with. Whereas there is not a more desirable alternative, because, that's just, but this is blank there.
Yes, it's blank.
That, I mean, that's what we're trying to fill in now.
I'm still screen sharing, right?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, I can't see that.
Yeah, you can't see it.
Stop at the end of the house.
Um, could somebody read that?
Read what, what Laura Gale has highlighted?
Yeah, I, I can't see it, so.
I can't either.
Okay, you want me to read it?
Please, yeah.
There it is.
Whereas there is not a more desirable alternative, because the existing non-compliant foundation. Still exists in the side setback, and the new dwelling is being based on the reuse of the foundation. And the historical location of the original house. And because the narrowing, narrowness of the parcel will require variances due to the width of the house. I don't think we need an and. It, it will require variances due to the width of the house, ultimately, wherever it's placed. On that lot.
That sounds good to me.
Okay, other comments on that? Sounds good to me.
Good to me too.
Okay. Anything that anyone wants to add to that?
Not what we're trying to say.
Great, okay, let's move on to the next.
Substantial.
Um, whether it's substantial or not, so the text that we have, whereas the request may be considered substantial. Because it is more than a twenty percent reduction of total required side setback. And a twelve percent reduction of the requirement for the narrower of the two side setbacks. It is not substantial, because the total area granted by the variance is minimal, approximately fifty square feet in total. Okay, so this one. Uh, this is relating to when there was just these two little porch pieces.
Yeah.
So now, obviously, we have, we've got a big stretch of, um, building there as well. Um, you know, it's not to say, so in that, in that case. Yeah, what do people think? I mean, it, it's, it's, it's still the same distance. But of course, the depth of, of what's being allowed is much, much greater. So would we characterize that as substantial?
Uh, Jonathan, regardless, your math is, I.
Yeah.
Not twelve percent, it's thirty-seven percent. So I don't think.
Yeah, my, mine is based on my, my interpretation of, of, of the code. With that, you know, that we were discussing earlier, so we, we can just take that out, I mean, I.
Cause you're, you're going from ten feet down to six foot four. Which three foot eight is thirty-six point seven percent of ten.
I under- I understand, I think we should just stick the numbers out, it's, that, as I said, that's based on, on my interpretation of the zoning. Which is that the ten foot, um. I mean, yeah, it, it doesn't matter, we, we should just take those numbers out.
Yeah, I don't know whether you want to take those numbers out, what, what, what is the purpose of taking it out, either it's substantial, or it's not, based on the map.
I think they should stay in, because I think they're important in, in the, uh, variance process.
But they can't stay in at.
Not that way. Not that.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the thing is, we don't, there's, there is, maybe is an agreement on what, what they are, um.
But you have the building inspector's denial letter, which it's his determination and his interpretation of the code, you're not being asked to make an interpretation of the code.
Yeah, okay.
So I can either, I can take out the numbers and say it's substantial or not substantial.
Based on.
Yeah, well, well. Well, I think, I think we can change the number to reflect the, the VIZIO's. Determination, and then, and then we need to decide whether it's substantial or not.
Who's amending that? Is that you, Laura Gale?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm screen sharing, so I'm highlighting so you can see where we're looking.
Thank you.
Um.
So, so if you could just put in the number that reflects the VIZIO's interpretation.
So.
And then. Do people feel that that's substantial?
The num- the number. Wait a minute. It's, uh, up above, it's. It was eight foot six. Out of thirty.
Right.
Eight foot six.
Okay.
And then three foot eight out of. Ten.
So the, the twenty-eight percent is correct.
And then the other one would be thirty-seven.
Sounds right. Thirty-six point seven, to be exact.
Yep.
And you're doing the whole side, so you're gonna take out the approximately fifty square feet.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, so you, I. The conclusion there, the total area is minimal, I don't know if you want to say something different.
Yeah. No, I think that whole, uh, you know, we have up until, I'm not looking at it, but I'm just guessing, up until, um. You know, requirement for the narrower of the two side setbacks, comma, and everything after that, it is not substantial, because. Um. Either needs to be, it needs to be stricken or edited, so I guess that, that, the end of that piece definitely needs to be taken out, the total area granted. By the variance is minimal. And the, now the question is, do people feel that it's substantial or not?
You have to justify that, too.
Yes.
Hard pressed to justify that it wouldn't, that it's not substantial.
Say, say again, what's up, Bob?
Yeah. How. You need some criteria to justify that it's not substantial, and I don't see it. At this point.
Well, we, we have the, the, these numbers.
I think you're on the right track with a minimal square footage, considering the size of the lot.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was in there, because the, the square footage of the two, the two little pieces of porch. Were so minimal.
You usually, you usually counter it by going back to the character.
Okay, yeah, so, so in that sense, um. We would. Agree that it is substantial, and I think that the, at least the, the north side, the, the narrow side is a substantial.
Yeah.
Change, um.
But it's still keeping in the character of the existing building that was there. So it's, it's not really substantial, if it's coming out in the same. I guess the same way that the building existed. Am I right or not? I don't know what you think.
Yeah, so, so it'd be that it, it is, so strike not, so it is substantial. However. The fact that the, the proposed. Building would not have, uh, an undesirable effect on the character of the neighborhood. And that it extends no further than. The footprint of the historical building.
On, on the north side, definitely.
On the north side. That's, are people comfortable, comfortable with, with that reasoning?
Want to read this again?
Yeah.
I just don't even understand why you put it on there. But, uh.
Sorry, Mark, I, I didn't understand.
Well, I just, well, no, I'm, I'm looking at this, so that's a porch, and this is what we're all fighting about?
No, not as far as the.
Oh, no, am I, am I looking at the wrong elevation? Okay.
Part of it's a porch, but most of it on the north side goes right along the whole northern side of the house, isn't it?
Oh, okay, no, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm gonna shut up.
It's late.
Um, so Laura Gale, could, Laura Gale, could you read back just that section? Please?
Um. I think I've gotten the historical. Location with some different wording, but. It is not substantial, because it is not a substantial deviation from the footprint of the historical house. And its design is not a substantial change to the character of the neighborhood.
Good.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I think you need substantial change. I don't, I think, just, it's not as, it's not a check.
Okay.
I hear what Bob said, take it out?
Take out substantial to the character.
Yeah. Good.
Um, the next one. Whether it would have a negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. I s- I mean, I think we're all probably on board that it would not have a negative effect of, on the physical or environmental conditions. Yeah.
I, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Yes.
So that one, I guess, could stay. As is, um. The next one also probably can stay intact, whereas the difficulty is self-created. As the addition is desired by the applicant, this does not preclude the granting of the variance.
It's not an addition.
Oh, yeah, sorry. As a new, new construction.
Well, they're, they're constrained by the existing lot, so.
But it is self-created, I mean, they're, he, he's proposing to build. A building that extends into the setbacks, so it's, 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 I mean, it's kind of clearly self-created.
Well, except for it, you know, it's a modern building, you know, I mean, people don't live in. You know, these are just modern buildings.
Well, I'm living in a house right now that would fit on that lot.
Well, mine's only fifteen hundred square feet, but. Yeah, okay. Just making my point.
Yeah, okay, I mean, you know, take note of the end, this does not preclude the granting of the variance, I mean, we, yeah. Um. So Laura Gale, I'm gonna ask for your help on this one, um, just. Oh, sorry, Karen, I.
I'm just looking at that very last, the last, um, paragraph needs to be amended also, because it's not. For the front porch itself, yeah. And the front.
Yeah, I. Yeah, I, I hadn't gotten there yet, so I was, I was wondering if, if we needed to throw something in there. Um. Just about the, the revision of the plans. That need to be submitted.
So this resolution is contingent upon submission.
Yeah.
Um, you could at the top say conditional approval, and then you could put the conditions in at the bottom.
Okay. And is that, uh, I mean, excuse my ignorance on this, but is that something where. It'd be conditional, and then he's gonna submit it, and. We will examine it at the next meeting, or how's that work?
I don't know, I mean. It, it seems like it might be unnecessary, the thing with the planning board, when they do it, is that they. Sign the final site plan, and there's no mechanism here for you to have a final.
Yeah.
Step, so you might want to make a comment in the beginning. Um, you know, based on drawing such and such, the area indicated such and such.
Yeah, okay. So, you know, it's gonna go back to, so, okay, let's, let's finish out, let's come back to that, we'll finish out the, uh. The remainder here, get back to that one. Sorry, I just lost. Okay, yeah, so the, oh, um, and Laura Gail, you had sent some language about, um, fees.
That's the same situation where I don't know that you have any kind of mechanism to do that. So, I mean. I, I don't know how to do it. I've never done it. Um.
Yep. Okay. Um. All right, well, we'll leave that to the other mechanisms of of the village, uh, which are kind of already running. And hopefully, we've got that covered with escrow. Uh, so moving on to the last paragraph. So therefore be it resolved that the benefit of the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the community. And the variance is granted for the entry porch south side and.
It's not, it's not for the porch. I'm starting at the variance of eight foot six inches to the total minimum side yards. And the variance of, what is it, three foot eight inch?
Well.
What is on the.
But we, but we, yeah, we want to be specific to what's shown on the plan, right? So we, can we just reference?
Yep.
That. Cause I mean, I don't think we want to grant the variance for that space within the, you know, along the whole south setback.
You could say based on the.
Rendering in the.
Yeah, based on drawing such and such.
Yes, exactly, yeah. So variance is granted for the plans as, uh, for the, uh, proposed building plans as described in the project documents submitted by the applicant. So that finishes okay. And then I guess that just leaves adding the note at the top about the conditional approval. But again, I'm not clear on how, how that becomes unconditional, or how, how that just becomes an approval.
Well, because you have the drawing. And he, he just has it, for example, in A three dot O one, he has the site plan proposed, and he has red indicating the 2005 variance. He has green the original non-conforming, and he has yellow for proposed. And so if it, um. If it's as drawn. It, it, I mean, it's just the area, the drawing, the, the part of the house that's drawn in the setback. Based on these drawings.
Yes, yes, okay, so. So we should reference that drawing and make a note that it's to include.
All portions of the house.
What's, you know, what's, what's noted as the existing encroachment on the drawing, and what's noted as the extension of encroachment on setback granted in 2005.
Well, but it's not the 2005 because it doesn't extend for that round area in the back anymore. It's, it's as the house is proposed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. All right, yeah, so just as drawn. For, yeah, for the, the portions of the building that extend past the minimum setback, uh, on the drawing. And you're talking, you mentioned A three point O one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I think that's probably the, the most, uh, concise. Hmm, okay.
So wait a minute, let me make sure I have that. I have a variance of eight foot six inches to the total minimum side yards. Or the minimum total side yards is what it would be. And a variance of three foot eight inches for the north side setback. As for the portions.
You guys still there?
Yep.
Okay, I just heard some, some ominous music.
That was my phone.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, um. So where are we? I can't, again, I can't see the document, but. Laura Gail, could you read, could you read back that portion, please? Hello, Laura Gail, you there?
I don't see her on, on at all.
Okay.
Now we're lost.
This is getting better and better.
Well, we're getting somewhere, but. We're working through it.
I think we're almost there, um.
This one's confusing and complicated. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, well, hopefully she's trying to get back on.
Not back yet.
Okay, um. Let's just wait. We still have to approve the minutes after we're done here, too.
Oh, yeah, we could do that, yeah.
So if, uh, if anybody hasn't read through those minutes, please, maybe take, while we're waiting, take a look.
Again. Oh, actually, I can't. Oh, yes, I can.
Sorry, I'm back.
He's back.
Okay.
There you are.
So, um, Laura Gail, I'm not sure, um. Where you cut out there, but could you read back just that portion?
I, I'm getting, I'm.
Okay.
Okay, um, from the north side and. Okay, uh, I'm gonna add this in. And the variance of eight foot six inches to the minimum total side yards and the variance of three foot eight inches. Um. Hold on, where does it say? Three foot eight inches for the north side setback for the encroaching portions of the dwelling described in the project documents submitted by the applicant. And then I'm putting in parentheses, A zero zero three dot zero one. Is granted, are granted.
Great.
You want me to do that one more time?
It's correct.
Yes, please, it's good.
Um, we resolve that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, self, safety and welfare of the community and the variance of eight foot six inches to the minimum total side yards and the variance of three foot eight inches for the north side set, north side setback for the encroaching portions of the dwelling described in the project documents submitted by the applicant. And then parentheses with the number are granted.
Great. Okay, um, unless we have anything else that we want to add or change. We just need to vote. Uh, any, any other additions or changes?
Nope.
Uh, a motion to accept the resolution?
I move, we accept the resolution.
Thanks. That was Bob, I think. And the second?
I second it. It's Mark.
Thanks, Mark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Uh, okay, motion passes, or resolution passes unanimously. Okay. Great. Uh, so Alex, if you're still there, I don't know if he's still there, but, um.
Yes, I am.
Okay. So you have your variance. Do you have questions on what the variance entails or how we adjusted it?
No. So.
Okay.
Painful road, yes, but.
Um, so I think, uh, Laura Gail will be in touch to regarding, you know, settlement of the escrow account. And, um, and then also, yeah, I guess we don't need revised drawings for me at this point. We're just going to use what we have, and I guess that's it.
Yeah, the revised plans will go on the planning board. So there, there will be obviously revised plans for the record in the village.
Yeah. But, um, yeah, that's. Uh, the only, the only thing that's relevant to our, our work here is, is the, what you submitted previously.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay, we appreciate your patience and good luck with the project.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Bye-bye. Good night.
Okay, um, so just additional business on that, um. Laura Gail, we need to, we need to refer this to the county?
No. No, um, nothing goes to the county for area variances for, um, residential use. Single family. And you would do that before you have a public hearing if you did need to do it.
I thought it was any, any resolution needed to be referenced. I sort of saw that. Okay. Fine, and, okay.
It, it, because it's, it's just our, our, our own, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't think so. It goes in with the minutes. It goes to the pla- the planning board and the building inspector.
Um, okay. That's good news. Okay, so all that remains for us to do, I think, is, uh, the minutes from the last meeting.
I've read them. I hope everybody else has.
Um, is anybody re-
I move, we.
Yeah. Yeah, I read my phone, but I, so I can't edit, but, uh, it's okay.
Okay, Bob, did you say you were reviewing them now?
I read, no, I read them when I.
Okay, Ethan?
Yeah, uh, I'm good with them.
Okay, uh, Karen, did you have any comments?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, great. I didn't have any comments either. Um, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I approve. I motion it.
I second.
Thanks, Mark. Bob seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? No, okay, uh, great. And, uh. Say again, Bob?
I have to go. You finished?
Just close your meeting.
Yeah, yeah, we're just gonna close the meeting.
But I make a motion.
Oh, we have to do that?
Yes, I make a motion that we close.
And second.
I second.
Ethan seconds. All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, okay, Bob, you're excused.
Thank you.
Good night.
And everybody else is excused.